Okay.
Got an extra one to leave?
Going to call me before it's five o'clock. Today is the June, June twenty first meeting at five. Okay, I would like to ask, uh, Brian, if you would lead us in prayer and slide will?
Yes, sir.
Lead us in, please.
Y'all pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, as we come to you this evening, God, I first of all just want to thank you for watching over us and protecting us like you do and guiding our lives, God. And God, I just ask that your Spirit be with us in this meeting tonight, God, that all the decisions are made tonight will be pleasing to you and be the right thing for Madison County, as you forgive or fail you, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Uh, and, uh, first item we need to approve will be minutes for June the seventh.
Yes, Mr. President, you have said minutes before you, I would ask that there are no changes, the board please approve those minutes.
Motion.
Yes, second.
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, concerned citizens, I have, uh, first on the list, I have Helen Holiday.
Yeah, that's all right there.
Okay. Oh, you're, you were here the last board meeting two weeks ago?
Yeah.
Well, the update is we're still working on several things, financing and, and timing. Uh, so we haven't gotten anything done over the last two weeks, other than the normal work that we always provide. So, but your problem is, uh, we got an opportunity to go over this, what the problem is, and we all the interested in trying to make sure we solve it.
I, I think Tim have, uh, a report for us.
Okay.
At the last meeting, I was asked to go out and look at the three roads, which were Williamson Road, Holiday Road, and Harper Road, and determine what it would take to do a DBST. Thousand, Holiday, you're looking. Sixty-one thousand to do all three of those roads with a DBST surface.
Okay. And, uh, upon saying that, uh, I would like to make a motion that we put those three roads on the county road plan unfunded. And then when we get to redoing our road plan for the upcoming year, we will make decision on, uh, can we find enough money to find, do, fund those three roads. So my motion is to put those three roads on non-funded road plan.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The decision would be made, uh, ladies, uh, when we start working our road plan for the upcoming year, or rather, we gonna be able to fund those three roads. And that road plan had to be put in place, uh, by February first, I think, something like that. So we working on the old road plan right now.
Carl, can I interrupt real quick and ask the county lawyer your question?
Yes, you may.
Uh, counselor, where are we on the Teddy Lee court medal with the dump trucks? Yeah.
Mister, uh, you know, Mister Lee got the lawyer, we went through all the, uh, issues that you're, that you're aware of. He, uh, he said that he had negotiated for new property, we was gonna move the trucks. It dragged out and dragged out and dragged out, so we, you know, we filed a motion to sue, and we have a court date now on it, we have a court date. Yeah, I believe it is, uh, in the winter, you know, coming up, so we have a court date, and they're aware of it.
Okay.
So it's moving forward at court speed.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you answer what I'm trying to?
Oh, you did answer. Anybody else have any other questions on this particular item? Thank you all. Uh, we're gonna move on to.
Mr. President, there's one other concerned citizen that signed up, Mary.
Not on the list.
Mary Butler.
Yes. Uh, who?
Ms. Butler?
Oh. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um.
Amy Butler.
How y'all doing? Uh, I live on Beaver Dam Road up in Camden, and I've been living there since ninety-five, nineteen ninety-five. And the roads are really, really bad. Uh, they're like, it's not, it's not a paved road, dirt road. Uh, when it rains, a lot of times our garbage people can't come through. Buses, children, the, the school bus come through, sometimes it'll run off in the ditch because it's so bad. And you have, we had those, uh, loggers coming up there, I don't know, month or so ago. Of course, they messed up the roads, but then when they left, they put, or somebody put rocks in it, but, and like in the center of the road, it was so high that when I go through it on my car, it drags it, you know, pulls some stuff down from my car, which I had to go and have repair. And, and there's a bend, a curve in that road, it's a big drop-off. Okay, if you're coming one way, you got to get to your right side, get to one side. Or if you meet in a car, you gonna have to, that car gonna have to wait until you get around, cause there's a big drop-off there. And then when it rains, that just makes it worse. Uh, and there's a lot of, a lot of holes in there, I mean, you, you, when you're driving, and you miss one, you, you, you swerve over to miss one, you hit another one. I mean, it's deep holes, it's not like a little, something real, real light. And I, and also, I would just want to ask too, uh, is there any chance that that road would be paved at all? I mean, although there's just a few people that live on that road, but we have mailman running, buses running, we going back and forth to work, school bus. So we were just wondering if, if that road would ever be paved.
Uh, I know exactly where you're talking about that deep bend.
Yeah.
Uh.
Okay.
I don't think this road manager and the last two or three road managers have an answer for that bend, because it springs there. And, and every time it come a little rain, it, it goes over. Uh, and I think some of your other problem is, is probably, uh, we've been lack of a, of a motivated driver that probably hadn't been up there consistent. And Tim, I know you gonna take care of that problem real soon.
Okay, all right.
And to answer you about paving, paving, I ain't gonna say never, but no time close future.
Okay. Well, okay. I, I won't complain on that, on the paved road, I won't complain on that, just keep the, the, the gravel road drivable. I mean, I'd be okay with that, because although the paved road that's around the road from me, it's worse than the paved, worse than the gravel road.
Cocking road.
Cocking road.
Yeah.
So when I leave my road, I mean, when I can't get through there, I go around there, and I'm still bumping, but.
They, they gonna come up there and work on that deep curve, but like I said.
I'll hold you to that now.
See that man back in that corner over there?
Which one? Oh, right here.
And that other one, that black haired man that went back?
Right over there, okay. Thanks for pointing them out to me.
All right, all right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's all. We have now the consent items five through thirty. So. Let me get, get them on.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, nice. Okay, business, item thirty-one, Chuck Burnham.
Y'all free to go, unless y'all just wanna watch good government.
In the fall.
No. We, we. Y'all, you ain't gotta come back, man, not, not time soon. Nah, I ain't tell you not to wash your truck, but I'm telling you. Gonna be muddy. Do like me, I don't wash mine. Every time you see the old black truck, it's just dirty. Y'all have a good day, yeah.
Good evening, I'm Chuck Burnham with Gary Haygood's office, and we were, uh, received bids on the, uh, the courthouse landscaping project, Madison County Historic Landscape Bid Recommendation. I'd like to read that, uh, to you right now, so addressed to Mr. Banks. Dear Mr. Banks, Kisha Buckner and I, my boss Gary, conducted bid opening ten a.m., June eighth, twenty twenty-one, for the courthouse improvement project. Following the summary of the bids submitted, all of which are from Metro Jackson area. Hopkins Construction, four hundred forty-eight thousand, Pavcon, three hundred seventy-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Harris Construction, three hundred and six thousand dollars. All companies provided the required documentation. Based on the data provided, it's my recommendation to award the bid to Harris Construction. Please let me know of any questions, or if you need any additional information. Sincerely, Gary Haygood.
I'd make a motion for approval for discussion, couple of questions afterwards.
Yes, second.
Take it.
Okay.
There's a couple of questions. What does, uh, what does this consist of, the three hundred and six thousand? I know you have landscaping down, but without going in details, tell us what all we gonna get for the three, three oh six?
New sidewalks within the fence. Um, the planting near the courthouse inside those walks now will remain. Uh, there are no plants per se within this bid. It is grassing, grading, and irrigation cleanup, that sort of thing.
So it's really not any landscaping as far as?
Right, I mean, yeah.
Trees, flowers, or?
Correct, yes, sir.
Any of that stuff?
Correct.
And what kind of timeframe we, uh, are looking?
The, uh, the, the recommended schedule that we have been working with is a hundred calendar days. Um, this would put it to be finished, excuse me, hundred business days, be finished, uh, around October sixth. Uh, we know that flea market's coming up a week later than that, and the, uh, the contractors that we've talked to are aware that, that they need to be through before then. If they're not through before then, they have to completely leave the site, leave it as pristine as it possibly can, and then re-mobilize to come back and finish the job if it's not completed by the flea market.
Okay.
Do you, do you think that the traffic from the tree, from the people at the flea market, it will hurt the grass?
It shouldn't, that's the dry time of year. Uh, and of course, we'll be watering that grass to get it established.
Right.
But we're thinking that this is a very easily doable within the timeframe that we've allowed for the schedule.
Okay.
For the grass, what is, what, what I said, this particular contract is for, uh, the sidewalks?
Yes, sir.
And leveling, what, when would they, the grass end?
The, the grass would go in, I would, yeah, I would say the grass would go in after completion of the concrete work. I wouldn't want to, you know, any, any equipment to be run over, new, new sod or new grading areas.
Grass going in that late, and they not finished until October sixth, and gonna be watering to, to, you know, you say it's a dry season, but it won't be a dry season on the square.
Right.
Cause you be watering.
Right. But.
Uh, before you know, uh, we won't be damaging any trees.
No. Now, we have specific requirements for all the existing trees to be barricaded off, and no equipment will be allowed underneath the canopy of those trees, and no dirt will be able to be moved around the roots of those trees.
All right. I second she the motion.
Gerald.
Oh, Gerald made it.
I know Gerald made it.
Well, it was a motion made.
The body got a motion, yeah, second.
All in favor, seven.
Okay.
That was time plus the vote, all right.
One more question, and you think it's okay for the whole, the flea market people to be up there on the new grass?
Yes, ma'am.
No, no, she's talking about after the project is completed, not, not, not during the project.
Yeah, it's, in a perfect world, it'll be fine. If we get a hurricane, who knows? But, um, I, I don't see that, that there would be any, any detriment to, uh, to working on that grass. Uh, grass only takes a few days to really get the roots established, and, you know, with luck, we'll get through sooner than October sixth, a lot sooner, and get that grass established at the point it's being mowed and not being watered as much, so it, it should be established. I know there's a lot of traffic.
Yeah.
I understand that.
What kind of guarantee we have on that? I mean, you're the one that's telling us it's okay.
I think you just guaranteed it, and we videoed it, so we got it.
Uh, that, I, I would have to say that, that as far as, as damage to the, to the grass from the, the crowds at the flea market, I don't know what that, that guarantee would be, but, uh, it hopefully will be covered, I know it needs to be covered, sure.
What about the vendors and their tents and their stakes?
That shouldn't, that should not be an issue at all.
All right.
Okay, uh, then most, that's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have, uh, Mr. Paul Agler.
Good evening, I want to give y'all an update on the jail re-roofing project. That project consisted of re-roofing the main jail and the two, uh, pod buildings that are located behind the jail. Also, as part of that project, it included replacing the majority of the rooftop air conditioning units that are on the main jail. On Tuesday, June the fifteenth, we had a bid opening, and we had three, uh, contractors that bid on that project. Independent Roofing Systems bid one million nine hundred and forty thousand. Equinell Malone bid two million one eighty-four, two fifty, and Norman Enterprises bid two million nine hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. The lowest and best bid is from Independent Roofing Systems in the amount of one million nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, bid checks out, certificate of responsibility is current and in place, all the bid bonds required were in place, and so therefore, we recommend that the county, uh, awards this project to, um, Independent Roofing Systems in the amount of one million nine hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Get a motion?
Motion.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Of course, of course.
Question?
I'm, I'm looking, or what, but you probably can tell me, uh, how long they gonna, uh, take to put this roof on?
How long?
How long?
Yes.
It's gonna take a hundred and eighty days to get the material, uh, a maximum of a hundred and eighty days. The roofing material is so hard to obtain right now. And we're looking at probably another hundred and eighty days. So we have three hundred and sixty days total, but we're hoping that some of that material will be available within four months. Uh, I did give the contractor a notice of intent to award, and therefore, he is trying to locate that material just as quickly as possible. There's gonna be some of that material that may be available sooner than the others, and I told him, as soon as we get enough to start a portion of that project, we need to move forward with it.
We talking about a year before the sheriff get a new roof?
Possibly, possibly, a maximum of one year.
All right.
Okay.
I just wanted to know.
Y'all, y'all may remember, this all started because of damage from a hailstorm. We filed an insurance claim, the insurance adjuster went up, looked, determination was made that it's gonna be easier, uh, and less expensive to replace some of the air conditioning units. We started down that path, when we, we have to remove them, take them off the building, put them back on. When we start into that conversation, we start risking damage to the roof that's there, so we start looking, okay, how do we mitigate that? And, uh, this has just kind of morphed into, well, you got patches that have been done on these roofs over the years, so the whole thing needs to be replaced, uh, to prevent leaks from the building. We've tried to work it out so that it's not, uh, open in the extreme temperatures, uh, but it looks like it's gonna be December or so before we really get started, uh, putting this back together. All the units have to be removed and put back on, and the, the concern was that if we're removing them and putting them back on, we, we may as well be replacing them, because they're old to begin with. But that in itself only added about seventy thousand dollars to the contract, if I remember.
Overall.
The, the, the twelve two-ton units.
Oh, additionally, yes, sir.
That's for about seventy thousand dollars on, on to the price.
Did the insurance pay?
Insurance is paying, but they're not paying much. They're not paying one point nine million.
Okay.
All right.
Oh, really? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, next, Tim, Brian.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, uh, first item I have is a supplemental agreement number three to the contract of MSEG for reunion, Farquharway Phase Two. This is to provide the documentation needed for the raise grant.
Make a motion for approval?
I'll second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Final item I have is, uh, natural gas improvements for Project Pine. These were accepted this morning. We had several people pick up bids, but only one bidder actually bid. Um, that was Steen Plumbing and Digging Service, the bid was eighty-six thousand five hundred, which is within the budget, and all of this is, of course, covered by the MDA grant.
You gonna get a motion?
Motion.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. President and Board, I just have one item here, this, the Garden Homes of Lake Caroline, this is a plat amendment, lot thirty-five will be split and combined with lots thirty-four and lots thirty-six.
Motion.
Second, I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, would you, would you like me to give you that update on that clover leaf right now, or wait till old business? The lady last meeting.
Oh. Well, if you must.
Uh, this was Bernice Caldwell, this was that.
Oh, oh, okay.
Okay. Uh, making headway on it, it's nine tenths of an acre, it's on day one, she already has a residence on it, and wanting to put something else there for her children to take care of. That is in Bear Creek certificated area. Uh, they do have a sewer line over there, but it is on the east side of Nissan Drive. Uh, approximately seven hundred fifty feet to that residence. Uh, Bear Creek is working on some numbers on that to see if it's feasible for them to do that. Uh, cause it'll require small force main and a grinder pump. Health Department's also working on some requirements on that lot, if possible, because of the size of it. So I should have a finalized answer at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I, I would like, if we could, go back to the one with Chad Wages. Uh, he did say Steen's Plumbing?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Steen's Plumbing.
He voted for it.
Yeah, boy, I knew that he.
He voted for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not familiar, I thought he meant to say scheme.
No, Steen, Claudia Wayne Steen.
Are, are we sure it's Steen and not scheme?
That's what I have written on this piece of paper from Civil Link.
Yeah, but I, um.
Isn't that Claudia Wayne?
Claudia, yes, Claudia, Claudia Wayne.
Claudia Wayne Steen.
No, it's scheme, not stain.
Claudia Wayne's last name is Steen.
It may be the.
Uh, I think it's stain, and there is a scheme plumbing.
Yeah, it is.
It's a man.
Oh, all right, well, I'm gonna vote no on that.
There's.
You're gonna vote no, but you made the motion.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm not even kidding to him at all.
Steen, S.T.E.E.N.
You wanna take your second out?
I, yeah, I'm gonna.
This your first copy?
No, he not even kidding to me.
You wanna withdraw your second, Mr. Steen?
I, I wanted just be excused from this vote, this.
Mr. Steen withdraws his second, Mr. President, is there another second to that motion?
I second.
Paul Griffin, okay. Now, can we have a vote?
All in favor?
All, uh.
All right, okay. We have another vote, that's four, two, zero.
Now, we had that first vote that was, uh, five oh, we're just gonna disregard that?
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna need to disregard that.
Do we need, Mr. Espy, do we need to do anything with that vote that we've already made?
Then can we legally do with that?
Why don't he just send certain the minutes? He acknowledges fact that he said that they're not related.
Okay.
It just put that in minutes, that's, that's, they're not related.
They're not related.
And revote. Not related and revoked, or?
Hold on, we're.
You don't even have to revoke it.
You have to revoke, they're not related.
We already took a vote, though, right?
Unless he, unless he doesn't want to.
Have y'all taken care of yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, we took care of it.
All right.
How's y'all taking care of it?
We gonna take care of it.
I think he just put up.
Now we got an administrative taking care of.
How's that? I'm gonna withdraw my, my motion.
Yeah, they all, you second the motion.
Well, I'm gonna withdraw my second.
But the administrative part is him and him getting together right in minutes, so that is what happens.
We gonna make sure that you, that it's acknowledged that you're not a part of the contractor company.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know you're not.
It'll be in minutes.
Okay. Yeah.
I know Claudia Wayne a lot longer than you.
Okay, where are we?
That doesn't mean anything, but hey. Hey, I don't need to be right today.
Where we at?
Okay, uh, Sheldon Vance?
Mr. President, Supervisors, I put on the agenda a placeholder for the American Rescue Q Funds discussion, I knew after the meeting last week that, uh, there might be a conversation. And, uh, Mr. Espy has a couple of items that, uh, he wants to talk about, so, uh, let's get started with American Rescue Funds.
The art funds, and we received the first tranche of them, art funds. So there are, without going into a lot of detail, honestly, uh, you know that we've been discussing broadband projects for a while, particularly they have last mile broadband in northeast Madison County. Months and months ago, you asked the administrator and I to do, to investigate this, so we've met with a large broadband contractor, we sign confidentiality agreements, so we're not gonna get into the details of them, but they're, they're a local, very large communications company. We've also, by phone, met with, uh, a company recommended by the Northern District Utility Commissioner, we met with them, we have, we're privy to their conversation, and then we've met with the local engineering company. And they desire to be, uh, to bid as a contractor, so we've done enough due diligence on this project that we can now come before you to say that it's about time, in our opinion, to begin to advertise for bids for a consultant to, uh, tell us the best way to go about it, the most efficient way, the way to save most money, whether it's on the pole or in the ground, last mile, whether there'll be discounts for subscription services, and whether frankly, you should own the system and lease it to the management company, uh, the operator, we don't know. So I'm recommending that we, uh, you allow us to develop a publication notice, advertise this, it's consistent with federal law and state law, and just move forward, and then we'll just take the bids and you decide, you know, who will, uh, in an engineering contract, you can negotiate, if it's an engineer you hire, you can negotiate the fee of the contractor, but that'll all be in the bid. So I'm recommending that you allow the administrator and myself to, to construct a bit, uh, uh, advertisement notice to put in the paper for broadband in Madison County.
Motion.
Second. All in favor of advertising?
For consultant?
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Now, uh, next.
Next item, Mr. President, Supervisors, is an appointment to the Region Eight Mental Health Commission Board. As you see, the letter from Dave Van indicates that Melvin Ray is your current appointee to that board.
Am I having objection we hold it to the next meeting?
No.
Okay, next.
Next item is hazardous waste disposal grant with MDEQ. Uh, MDEQ has awarded us seventy-five thousand dollars on this grant, and we just have to accept it and complete the paperwork.
Motion.
Motion.
Is this that?
Second.
All in favor?
The next item is a purchase using wireless grant funds. The Sheriff's Department has received a grant from the Wireless Communication Fund, uh, and he has asked for the purchase of eight thousand dollars. And he has asked for the purchase of eight thousand dollars worth of communication equipment using state contract pricing. And you have the requisition and the state contract information behind this item.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The first item for your approval is gonna be the budget amendments and the interfind cash transfers.
Make a motion for approval? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next items, forty-one through forty-three, is the approval of the general claims docket and two payroll dockets for June ninth and June eleventh.
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
The next item is the approval of the planning and zoning commission per diem.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number forty-five is the Fleet Corps Claim Docket.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One, four, and three against, is that what they want?
Four oh.
No, I heard one vote.
You have a vote.
Okay.
Okay.
It's there, Mr. Steen.
And the next is the...
Approval for the payment for the CVS tip to the City of Madison.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, one of the last ten thirty?
Uh, nothing, Mr. President.
Uh, next, Randy Tucker, Sheriff, nothing. And no business, no new business, motion for adjournment.
I got one, I got, I got one bid.
That was quick.
Mr. Steen said he had something.
Okay, Mr. Steen.
I have one. I know, I think next meeting is on the thirtieth. And it's concerning the entire districts. And I know that in the past that we've asked for options on the table for that district. So if you will, sometime this week, whatever options that we have to discuss and to think about at our next board meeting, which I think is next week, if you would, send those out to each board member.
Send them out to everybody?
Yes, please do, if you have any.
I will. In addition to the special meeting on June thirtieth, we are getting ready to start budget discussions tomorrow. All of the department's budgets are due in. So I want to offer you some possible dates for budget hearings in July. We don't have to set this today, but if you've got your calendar out and you could consider the July, July thirteenth, fifteenth, twenty-first, or twenty-second, those would be dates if you don't have anything going on. And maybe at the next meeting, we can set those dates. Thirteenth, fifteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-second. That is, the thirteenth is a Tuesday, the fifteenth is a Thursday, the twenty-first is a Wednesday, and the twenty-second is a Thursday. Thirteenth to fifteenth, the Chancellor Clerk will be out of town. Okay, all right. The National Chancellor Clerk's meeting in Gulf Court. Okay, then maybe the twenty-first and twenty-second? This, we can think about it. I just wanted to throw those dates out instead of try to rush them. Okay?
Okay.
No second? No, Paul?
All in favor?
You did pretty good, Paul.
Whatever.
You did pretty good.